This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
We'll call this meeting to order of the Brighton Central School District Board of Education, public meeting for Tuesday, February 1st. Happy Lunar New Year, Happy Black History Month, and Happy First Day of February. To begin with, we'll start with public participation. I will note, public participation is an opportunity for your Board of Education and district leadership to receive feedback from the community. As previously stated, we want to hear from the community we represent in a respectful, open-minded manner. We allocate three minutes per speaker in order to give everyone a chance to speak, while also letting the board conduct its business on the night's agenda. Over the last few meetings, I've tried to be as flexible and respectful as possible to speakers. However, the three minutes per speaker allocation has morphed into four minutes, which has turned into five minutes. So I've asked Karen Hatch, my fellow board member, to just put the timer at three seconds when each speaker starts, and it will be three minutes, excuse me, not three seconds, I apologize. Thank you. The three-minute mark, and she'll let you know when that three-minute mark has hit. As always, whether directly or indirectly, our students are watching all the time. We consistently state that personal attacks or denigration will not be allowed towards anyone. You can provide your feedback or state your disagreement with policies or practices without attacking a person's character. To begin, please note Dan Goldman, who is over there, raise your hand. If you'd like to speak, you can give him a card. I do have three up here already, thank you very much. I'll begin to call the speakers in just a moment, and all we would ask is you give your name and the town. As previously stated, for security reasons, you do not need to give your street address. First up, we have Malaney Bernhardt.
Hi, Malaney, Brighton.
Thank you.
Today, I just want to talk about something a lot of people don't think about or talk about for immunity and how to build your immune system. One of the most important things you can do is get adequate oxygen. I don't think people realize, when you wear these masks all day long, you change your CO2 and O2 ratio, which does impact your health. There is no long-term studies on what masking does to your organs, your body system, and long-term health. Our children have been in these masks for two years. Our first graders have now experienced school, always in a mask. They don't know what it's like to not be in a mask in school. According to a child psychiatrist, Dr. Mark McDonald, COVID-related policies have caused significant damage to children. The current generation of children has lower IQs, signs of social brain damage, and he cites the masks, the Zoom schools, lockdown mandates, lack of social contact, not being able to see faces, and being stuck at home causes degeneration in kids. Another study by the NIH, children born during the pandemic have significantly reduced verbal motor and cognitive performance than children born pre-pandemic. Eight out of 10 children and adolescents report worsening behavior or psychological symptoms or increase in negative feelings due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Oxford University professor Carl Henigan cites fear-mongering as a major contributor to psychological problems in children and adolescents. He says that health officials should have de-escalated fear and anxiety concerning COVID-19 in kids, and the risk of serious illness is so low, they should not be worried. So my question is, you know, I'd like to see more data from the school on what the studies they're finding. We are two years into this now. I would think there's a lot more data, a lot more studies out there, what all these COVID policies are doing and how to educate our children. I'm asking, what are we teaching our kids? Are they doing any research? Do they have any idea that on January 23rd, there was a march against medical mandates in Washington, DC? Thirty-five thousand people showed up, doctors, scientists, nurses, firemen, vaccine-injured people showed up to speak. It was over three hours long. Senator Ron Johnson, the following day, had a COVID second opinion panel, roundtable with attorneys, scientists, doctors, nurses, again, talking about cures, different ways we should have handled the pandemic. Has anybody looked at that? Has anybody taught children to do research and question, ask questions? Why do we keep doing the same thing for two years with no different results? The other thing that is happening that just started on the 29th, I don't know if you're aware of, there is the Freedom Trucker Convoy that started in Canada. Over 70,000 truckers, Canada and U.S., went to Ottawa to Parliament to protest against these mandates. I don't even know if our students are even aware what is going on around the world because of the censorship.
That's three minutes. I'm so sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My only response would be, we've not had the same information, Malaney. Again, we're functioning from two different sets of information. And Dr. McDonald himself, who suggested the deworming medicine, ivermectin, as a treatment for COVID, has been discredited in many ways as well. So we're functioning from two very different sets of information, and we see it differently, so thank you.
Next, I have Karen Malecki.
Karen from Brighton. Last time I was up, I spoke of the millions of dollars that have been received by Brighton for the CARES Act and Esser Funds. I spoke of the change, the documents that have to be submitted every six months to state what the school system has to submit. And there's a lot more that's been going on, that these funds are used for. I mentioned critical race theory the last time. It's been rebranded to be called social-emotional learning or culturally responsive and sustaining education. I know we're using that here. It provides free anti-racist therapy for white educators. It's used to psychologically manipulate students' beliefs, values, and worldviews to shift them into socialism, secular humanism, and a new world order. The first President Bush of the United States had that, spoke of the New World Order in his speeches. The first was September 11th, 1990, and then they continued. This education is a vehicle for Marxist-based theory to indoctrinate children. The Biden administration is also pushing a handbook titled, "Roadmap to Reopening Safely and Meeting All Students' Needs", suggesting districts use social, emotional, and mental health programs for children. Another guide, "The Guide for Racial Justice and Abolitionist Social and Emotional Learning", promotes the narrative that America is a racist nation. In addition, 40% of schools have used their funds to upgrade their HVAC system to sanitize the air with toxic chemicals. There is more, please do your homework. Several of these recommendations are illegal. Years ago, I can remember learning from Consuela Newton, a well-known healthcare advocate. She spoke of how, in the past, tyranny has been forced on populations to control them. She stated the way to weaken or destroy a population is through harming their children. That is what is being done here. They are literally using our money to harm our children, destabilize and eventually destroy our families and thereby our communities. Those of you on the board, I hope you can find it in your hearts to change these plans, to stop taking this money from the federal government and instead save our children from these tyrannical acts. I also hope you are not being forced into doing these acts and that you're not being threatened. I want to mention to you that I'm vaccine-injured myself. It was 36 years ago.
That's three minutes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I can, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to point out, critical race theory is not culture-responsive education or social-emotional learning. They're very different definitions. We're not teaching critical race theory, and I'm just going to say it and not debate it or discuss it. There is nobody here acting tyrannically, and there's nobody here who is hurting children. The educators in this community continue to do a tremendous amount of work on behalf of children and families. Suggesting otherwise and accusing them of harming children intentionally is frankly shameful. But you've expressed your opinion, and I've had an opportunity to express mine, so thank you.
It's happening all throughout the country.
I will tell you that no one here on the school board is being threatened in any way, shape, or form. We continue to encourage open debate and provide the best possible opportunity for our kids. Thank you very much for your time. Next up, I have Heather Coyne.
Hi, everybody. Heather Coyne, Brighton resident. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the district and the board for continuing to support and promote literacy, comprehension, compassion, and growth. Whether it's about accepting how science actually works, understanding that you don't determine health policy with a parent poll, encouraging people to grapple with ugly, real history, or recognizing the necessity of life-affirming memoirs, you've refused to cave and cater to the voices of a loud minority. I'm thankful to live in a community that, for the most part, supports what you're doing. Keep up the good work, and know that we've got you.
Thank you. Dan, do we have anybody else for public participation? Right, that will conclude, rather, Agenda Item 2, which is public participation. Next up is approval of the agenda. However, I'm going to have to make an amendment to the current agenda under Article 8, which is Approval of First Read Policies. We will be adding a third policy. There's an existing A and a B. We are adding a Policy C for a first read entitled, I'm sorry, it's Policy 5689, and it's entitled Masking on School Grounds and Within School Facilities. So we'll discuss that when we come to it. But with that amendment to the existing agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next up, we've all had a chance to look at the minutes from January 18th, the January 18th Public Business Meeting. Any questions or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th Business Meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, very special presentation by a member of the Brighton Volunteer Fire Department. This is a presentation on the to-be-proposed Volunteer First Responder Property Tax Exemption. Dennis Jeffries.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having me tonight to present on this exciting opportunity for the fire department. My name is Dennis Jeffries. I'm president of the Brighton Fire Department. I'm a lifelong Brighton resident, live in the 12 Corners area now. I joined our Explorer Post back in 2000 and the fire department in 2003. Thank you. So this is an exciting opportunity for us. Like I said, the legislation was passed with Senate sponsor Senator Broke and Assembly sponsor, Assembly member Lunsford. Governor Hochul signed the bill in December of 2021 after a recommendation from the New York State Task Force to booster the volunteer ranks and fire departments and ambulance corps. This law is specifically impacting Monroe County, and what it is proposing is a 10% reduction in property assessments for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel who have served for at least two years. This is just for Monroe County, but it is not a new concept in New York State. Monroe County is the 11th county in the state to have this enacted, and it has shown positive results elsewhere in the state. So when Governor Hochul signed the law, he said, "When trouble calls, our volunteer firefighters and emergency workers are there to answer." These selfless volunteers deserve our full support, and I'm proud to sign legislation that rewards them for their sacrifice and encourages others to join the ranks to keep our communities and Monroe County safe. So I think it's important to point out what the local municipalities are doing, because we have to work with every municipality. In Brighton, we cover parts of the town of Brighton, the town of Pittsford. We actually cover five different school districts, but the majority is Pittsford, Penfield, and obviously Brighton. So the town of Brighton already introduced it at the town board meeting, and the public hearing is February 9th. The town of Pittsford is having their public hearing tonight. The Pittsford Central School District had their hearing last week, and they've scheduled to vote for next week. The Penfield School District, we presented to them last week, and they scheduled their public hearing for February 8th, with the hope that they will vote on it at the same meeting. And then Monroe County Legislature has introduced it earlier in January, and their public hearing is also next week. So the good news is that all the municipalities we work with are moving through the process. We are under a little bit of a time constriction, because when it was signed into law and when it needs to happen by, and I can go into that a little further. So our organization, we are a combination fire department. We have been since 1925, so almost 100 years of volunteer career personnel working together. We have 36 career firefighters and line officers and 84 volunteers. I do want to point out, our chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief are all volunteers. We responded to 2,274 incidents last year, which pictured, you can see some of them. Top left was a motor vehicle accident on 590 with a person trapped. The top right was a house fire over by our Station 1. Bottom left was actually in the town of Pittsford during the windstorm in June, but the Brighton Fire Department was first on scene. We found the tree that had ripped off the front of the house, and there was still an elderly resident, she was in her mid-80s, in sight. So we were able to get her out. She was actually up in that bedroom where the corner is. And then bottom right was just at the end of last year. That was a motor vehicle accident where the car wound up in Malik's Bakery parking lot. The occupant was trapped in that, and we had her extricated in less than five minutes. I just want to point out that these are the incidents we respond to. It's not just house fires, it's motor vehicle accidents, it's emergency medical service. We also pump out basement when there's a lot of water, which has been happening lately. So we do all sorts of different things. Now, a big thing for us is new member recruitment and retention, because with 84 volunteers, we've got to keep our force strong. Two or three years ago, we actually got a grant from the federal government to bolster our recruitment budget. In the last three years, we have had phenomenal results of recruiting 36 new members, nine of which were district homeowners within the Brighton Fire District. And that's important to point out, because we retained all nine of those Brighton Fire District homeowners. And of the 27 that were not, we retained 16 of them. Now, a big reason for that is that there, people are moving and different things are happening in life. If you own a house, you are more likely, you have roots in the community, and moving is a significant life event. If you're renting an apartment and, you know, something better opens in another community, or you're looking to purchase a home, you're more likely to move. So that was a big accomplishment for us, was retaining all nine of them. So that means we need to focus on our district residents. For community aspect, our volunteers are involved in a lot of different aspects. We do the DWI reenactments, we do school visits, station tours for different schools and community groups, community events. We do the Homecoming Parade, which is always one of our favorites. We get our bagpipe band to come out, we get a lot of people, all our trucks on display. It's funded to do it in front of our own town. Sports escorts, Brighton Athletics has had a really good last year. So we've been doing a lot of those, and they range anywhere from, you know, early evening to sometimes really late at night. We're always happy to get out of bed for those, because it's so exciting for those kids and what they've accomplished. Bonfires, top right is a good example of that. That's the middle school bonfire that usually happens at the end of the year. We do open houses, the farmer's market, which is, you know, at the high school through the summer. We usually have a presence at that. Some of these have changed over the last two years, and we've been coming up with unique ways to adapt to the situation. But we try to remain out in the community as much as possible. Our Explorer Post, which I was a member of, is still extremely strong. We have 17 members, 13 of which are Brighton High School students. That has always been a phenomenal way for us to recruit young individuals and get them introduced to the fire service, and then join when they become 18. So the biggest thing for us was, we want to do the due diligence and show what the effect of this law would have on, for our members and then the rest of the residents in the school district. So right here, it outlines there are 21 fire department members that would be eligible and four of the Brighton Volunteer Ambulance members. There is some overlap with the Brighton Central School District and the Pittsford Fire Department and Henrietta Fire Department. We confirm with both of them, they don't have anybody in Brighton that would qualify. So this is a true representation of what it would be. Of the 25 homes, the total assessed values are about $6 million, with school tax of $165,000. So a 10% reduction would be $16,553. And we are aware that just doesn't go up into thin air, that has to come from somewhere. So with a 10% reduction on the assessments, it puts more of a tax burden on the rest of the school district residents. So to outline that, we took the tax levy from last fall and the rate, and then we deducted out that 10% assessment, and the new tax rate was 26.530450. So on a $250,000 home, the taxes will go up $1.92 per year. So we do acknowledge that this is a fantastic opportunity for the fire department in recruiting new volunteers, but it would have an effect on other residents. And we want to make sure you are aware, we acknowledge that, and we want to really justify why that is a doable thing. So value Brighton Volunteer Firefighters. So we are a combination department, we've been for almost 100 years. A bunch of our neighbors have gone to a more career-focused department and have very little, few volunteers, if any. So as you can see, our volunteers have kept our tax rate low in Brighton. So some of them are doubling even triple that. So the $1.92 a year increase on a $250,000 home has really the opportunity to save them hundreds of dollars a year in fire taxes if the volunteers all went away. So I look at it as that $1.92 is an investment to keep your whole tax bill low. So the other question that might come up is, you know, are they getting a better service because they're paying a higher tax rate? The independent service organization, which they do insurance ratings, they're a group. They do 48,000 ratings of all fire departments in the country. They do a scale of 1 to 10, one being the best. There's 178 ones in the country, there's 1,102s. In 2017, Brighton Fire Department was upgraded from Class 3 to Class 2. That puts us in the top 2.8% of fire departments in the country. How that's impactful to residents is that your insurance bills actually go down, because the insurance looks at your fire department and says, "If you're less likely to suffer a fire loss, we can insure you for less." So actually, the bills for Brighton Fire District residents have gone down with their insurance companies due to that. So we are still providing an exceptionally great service to our residents while trying to keep the tax rate as low as possible. District homeowners and volunteers, 40 out of our 84 members are homeowners within the Brighton Fire District. It's important to point out that they have an average years of service of 22, and non-homeowners have an average service of 13 years. I do want to point that out, because it is important for us, as we focus on who we recruit, is when we can bring in those district homeowners, they've got deep roots in the community, they do stay for a lot longer and provide a lot of service to the residents. Now, on top of that, district homeowners' leadership. So we have 21 leadership positions between our line officers, civil officers, and commissioners. 20 of the 21 are filled by district homeowners. The one that isn't is an individual that's 50 yards into the city of Rochester, because his job requires he lives in the city of Rochester. So everybody is really in the center of town and able to respond quickly. But I think it's also important that 50% of the Brighton Fire District members that are homeowners in the Fire District serve in leadership roles. So not only are they staying for longer, but they're stepping up and serving in those leadership roles, which are crucial to our success. The opportunity is created by the new legislation. Obviously, recruitment of current Brighton Fire District homeowners, that is our number-one focus. Those are the people that have shown that they are in the fire department for a long time, they step up in leadership roles. The other important thing is, with them living in town, they're able to respond to emergencies quicker. Time is of the essence in these emergency situations, so that is a huge reason why we focus on the homeowners. Increasing retention of current volunteers that are homeowners. So our current volunteers will see an impact on their tax bills, and it will be noticeable. So that is very much of an incentive to be able to remain with the fire department. With dual-income families and the sort, the fire department is not getting any easier. Training requirements are going up. It is a significant time commitment away from your family, and if this is a way to help justify that to yourself and your family, that is very important to us. It also incentivizes our current volunteers to buy a home within Brighton. You know, it assists with making it more affordable as well. But now, if you're looking at buying a home, and you've been a Brighton volunteer for two to five or however long, in Brighton, it will be an immediate impact. If you move to another community, you have to serve with them for two years before you can realize this. So in the essence, it immediately makes it more affordable for our volunteer firefighters to purchase within Brighton. And that's where we need them and want them to be. So our action items are requesting that a public hearing be scheduled at the next board meeting, and request that you would pass a resolution to enact the partial tax exemption. As I mentioned, we are under a strict deadline here, because it has to be done by March 1st. If it's not done by March 1st, it would not impact until the September 23 school tax bill. So we're looking at a 20-month runway for that to happen. And there's been some really good press on this, and we're really trying to take the momentum into our recruitment campaign. So if we have to wait that long, it just kind of puts us behind a little bit. So we really want to get out ahead of this and really take the momentum and the PR around it and be able to run with it and keep going with our recruitment efforts. And that was all I had, so I appreciate the time, and if you have questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
You know, I'd just say first, I have a past personal connection to the volunteers. So my father was a 35-year volunteer, and you all do great work. So greatly appreciate your service, and we'll give this additional thought. We look forward to asking that the community weigh in through a hearing at our February 15th, which is two weeks from tonight, board meeting, and we'll take a vote on this issue. But before, I'll let you get away from there. I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions for Dennis, or anything you want to ask?
I really appreciated exactly how you laid it out. Thank you very much, it was helpful.
Thank you, I tried to not take too much time.
No, you didn't, thank you. Karen wasn't timing you, but it was very helpful.
I was worried about the three minutes. I was like, I'm going to try and be quick, but three minutes is tough.
Thank you.
Dennis, just, you know, we experience on a firsthand basis here all too often the response of the fire service, the very quick response, the very professional response, the very supportive response. So first and foremost, thank you for that. In fact, today, several pieces of equipment had to come here as a result of a mechanical issue that caused an alarm. And so you're here very, very quickly, and we're quickly to get our kids, who are standing outside, back in the building quickly, right? So it's this great collaborative relationship where you're so helpful to us all the time. And I know so many residents feel that way as well. Speaking as one of them, who I think it was about a year ago, several of you, including you, were in my basement because of a faulty alarm, right? So we experience these things all the time, and all of you giving up time, getting up from the dinner table, leaving your families to come help the rest of us, is a great example for our kids about volunteerism and putting the common good above all else, and we really appreciate that. So thank you for that. This was really well done, and a lot of great information for the board to consider.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, it's February, so it seems like a great opportunity to hear from Nate Merritt regarding health, physical education, and athletics.
I'm not going to give yours.
I thought, man, Tom Hall infiltrated everybody's presentation. It's not just the high school, Tom Hall.
All right, welcome, everyone. I just want to say to the Brighton Fire Department, while I have a chance, he had mentioned when he was up here, our escorts. I can't thank you enough for all of that. Our athletes, when we happen to win a sectional title, are more than thrilled coming home with an escort. So I personally thank you, and making that call the chief holder is always a fun call, so I appreciate it. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through health, physical education, and athletics. Just some highlights from this past year. Again, looking at our health curriculum, continued work with mental health and wellness. Our K-12 staff has done a really, really nice job of looking at our, you know, critical topics as we have left the pandemic here, and really what's important, takeaways for our health curriculum. Really, every environment that you walk in, very, very warm, inviting environment. As you see Janice Mix up at the top at French Road, working with her puppet. It has been a fantastic year, and really, things that we've taken away from this time have been great adds to our curriculum, and we look forward to building on that, for sure. One thing that we have noticed in the past year, though, is obviously having the kids in front of us. Health is a topic where group discussion, debate, asking questions, it's really critical for kids to gain insight by talking it through. So all the way from French Road, and especially up at our high school levels, the discussion-based classes have really, really come alive again, and we are really excited to have that, not beyond Zoom any longer, and face-to-face with our educators and peers, talking back and forth, talking about experiences, asking those critical questions, and getting some of those answers as they move on in their lives. We also had the opportunity to restructure a little bit this year as our K-12 scope and sequence. We moved our, what normally lived in seventh We moved our, what normally lived in seventh grade, down to sixth grade. Reason for that was we really felt at our secondary education, we had six, then eight, and then ten. It was really a nice transition for us to go every other year in the secondary education and we've really seen some great, great results from that with our sixth graders being first year middle schoolers, a lot of stress, a lot of anxieties going into a new building and having that ability to hit them right off the bat in the sixth grade, building on that in eighth grade, and then obviously having their high school experience in tenth grade. We really, really are happy about that and we look forward to building upon that as we move forward. Looking at physical education, physical education, obviously, over the last couple of years has been a challenge. When we weren't in school, looking at how we remotely taught physical education and kept kids active was a challenge. I can tell you that after, obviously, this time, we feel really good about where we are curricularly. We feel that we can transition to kind of anything at this point with our curriculum. We taught from, you know, a Zoom location, a lot of our secondary curriculum is all online for kids now. If kids miss a day of class, we have resources for them in the moment to meet those requirements given to us by the state. But again, goal is to keep kids active. If we can provide resources for them, not only when they're physically in a classroom, but also resources from the outside when they're piling up their laptop or tablet at home, that's ultimately the goal. So moving forward, we've had great success. We have an online physical education class at the high school, which has been really, really helpful for those that have been on medical leave or are credit deficient, to give kids the opportunity to graduate on time. But again, that has now morphed into really our whole curriculum being online for kids to access at all times, so something that we're really happy for. Again, we're prepared for the future. I think we can really maneuver our curriculum in any way, shape, or form at this point and that's really been a good, a good highlight for us in the past couple of years is that I think part of my worry as the leader of this program is how could we transition to, you know, being away from our kids? How could we really ensure kids that we're being active when they're away from us? And I think what we've done and been able to accomplish from an online stance, but also now getting back in person, I really feel confident in the future of moving our program forward and really, we didn't have a delay in the last two years. We pushed forward and curriculum kept on building. Lastly, we had some great additions to our staff, some moving around, but again, we got to hire some great staff this year, exciting new young educators that have already given a lot to our program, which we're excited about. Looking at athletics, if you look at athletics over the last year, year and a half, it has been an absolutely crazy year. From that spring where we shut down all of sports to the past year where I can say with all confidence, we were able to host all of our varsity JV and modified sports in some way, shape, or form. Yes with masks on, yes with spectator limitations, we were able to do so. And I think, you know, if you look at the next bullet, there are participations at an all-time high. Kids need to do something. Kids need to be involved with whatever that might be extracurricular, but athletics has given them an opportunity to be active and participate in a team setting, in a group setting, which is vital at this point. So we're really, really happy that, you know, over the last year, we were able to host all of these teams and do so as safely as possible. It's interesting, you know, coaches, you know, our coaching staff has had to, just like our teaching staff, has had to look at things very differently. Practices, their practice spaces, the limitation of spacing and moving kids around, they've had to think about coaching a sport very differently. And I can honestly say that they've done so, you know, very, very well and they've looked at things with opportunity in mind. It's giving kids opportunity to enjoy what they love. And so taking that every day has been a blessing for not only them as coaches, but obviously for our kids that come in contact with them as well. If you see the bottom picture, and I wanted to point this out, you know, last is creating some normal for our kids. I can say, you know, even talking with some of our upperclassmen this year, some of the most, you know, memorable moments for them this year was having homecoming, having a sports assembly, having a pep rally, having things that they have not had over the last couple of years. And to be able to do so out on our turf this year was just fantastic and it was, it was a great community moment for us, but more importantly, you know, our athletes got to enjoy themselves in what we would consider a more normal setting for them and we were really thrilled that we could provide that for them. In this year, I, you know, like the, you know, the Brighton Fire Department mentioned, we've had a really, really good year, you know, as far as success goes. Brighton was named a School of Excellence by New York State Public High School Athletic Association. That means that every one of our varsity teams had a great point average of ninety percent or above. That's the first time that that's happened since I've been here and again, it's one of those accolades that we've been, I've been talking about for the last five years and we were able to accomplish it this past year, which is just a great mark for all of our varsity athletes. We won six sectional titles, we had nine individual sectional champions, six additional finalists in the sectionals, and over thirty kids represent our school at state competitions. You know, the fire trucks have been coming down Litten Road quite a bit for all of these accolades, which is great. And we're very, very proud of them and I can say, you know, our student athletes have really taken advantage of the time that they've gotten and enjoyed themselves. It is great to see the stadium full, it is great to see the gym full with kids enjoying what they really truly love to do. So again, you know, I get to enjoy my job a lot more when kids are enjoying their time for sure. Just looking at future items, again, we talked about PE, continue to look at flexibility for kids. How can we truly make it work for each kid? How can we look outside the box and find them their requirement that they need from the state of New York, but more importantly, make them, you know, understand ways that they can enjoy moving their body and to stay healthy and to live a healthy lifestyle? Continue looking at mental health in our health curriculum, really looking at some internal partnerships. Our health department really worked very closely with our counseling department, but in addition to internal, you know, programs, looking at external programs, Bivona is coming into our school and working, you know, with our health teachers as well. So it's something that we're really looking forward to make all of those connections, to make it a really holistic approach to our health curriculum. And lastly, athletics, you know, continue to provide, you know, these great opportunities for athletics. It's not about winning sectional titles, it's about the experience that they leave Brighton with. We have now come up with ways to plot feedback from kids. I want to hear about their experience, I want to hear the good, the bad, the ugly, but more importantly, so that we can get to the best place possible for them. And again, our coaches have been great in asking for more professional development. How can I become a better coach? How can I look at things differently? So things that we're going to be doing moving forward though. So, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you, Nate, very much. Any questions for me? Great job, great to hear about all the successes, thank you very much. Next up is principal reports, and I think Danielle, I had you go last the last time, so you get to go first.
As Danielle's coming up, I just want to point out one thing, back to the beginning of Nate's presentation about everything people had to do to make things normal in terms of events, masking, conducting an athletic program. So I just want to make one point, Nate, if you could just stand up for one second so I can embarrass you. Number one, Nate last year was our COVID coordinator, which goes unsung but needs to be pointed out, so thank you for that, everything you did. But the complexity of operating athletic program in the first place relative to scheduling and safety, creating safe spaces and events in a normal, whatever that means anymore, year is pretty complex, but to do that in the midst of a pandemic and think about masking for kids, the return to play protocol, which is very complicated, all of the medical issues around that, but just creating a space, we talk about finding ways for there to be normalcy. Our visual performing arts people and our athletic people, our activities people, did everything they could to adjust dramatically. So Nate, thanks for your leadership and I just want to point that out.
Okay, I don't need to speak for Nate, but interestingly and ironically, as he was speaking, Coach Elkins was sending me a text of a whole bunch of pictures of the girls' modified basketball practice today and the team-building activities that they were doing. So when Nate talks about it not just being about championships, that was a perfect example. And my response to her was I can see all the smiles on their faces underneath the masks. So just to add to that, Nate, that's such a valuable portion of what we do every single day, the experience we provide for our kids. TCMS was very, very, very busy this month, which was fantastic. One of our bright stars, no pun intended here, was our Martin Luther King Day celebration, where our students had the opportunity to do what we called Shining Like Martin. And each of our students watched a video about Martin Luther King tailored around kindness and they each read a variety of quotes and then picked one that resonated with them. And based on that, they created kind of an I can mission statement of their own and that's what you see posted there in our atrium. So it was a fun activity for students to engage with and really think about kindness in terms of our Brighton believes qualities and how that connected with the work of Dr. Martin Luther King. Additionally, we had a joint PTSA meeting with French Road where individuals from Bivona came to talk about Aaron's Law and all of the work that they would be doing in health classes with the students, really throughout the entire district. Their presentation was obviously focused just on the three-eight curriculum. But basically, Aaron's Law, if you don't know, is a law that was named after a childhood sexual assault survivor. And the law requires that all public schools implement a prevention-oriented child sexual abuse program. So Bivona is helping us with that to train our teachers and to provide age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate deliverables for students to teach them about sex abuse and telling a trusted adult and all the techniques that go on with that. So we had a great opportunity to share all that information with parents and had some fabulous dialogue with parents about what students can expect to see in the coming weeks at both French Road and 12 Corners Middle School. We also had last week our orientation for our Five Go Six students. This is the first time that we've done this so early in the school year and it was very well-attended. We had presenters, were the TCMS administration, Jeff Green had an opportunity to introduce himself and his role in the district. We had representatives from the PTSA talk about what life in the PTSA realm looks like at the middle school. Our counseling department talked about the continuum of supports that we have and the transition timeline for students. Our school psychologist and special ed department, or special ed department chair also did separate presentations regarding the IEP process and 504s and what they look like at 12 Corners Middle School. We had a presentation from our world language department and instrumental and vocal music department so that students had the information and families had the information that they needed in order to start doing their course requests. So we're already in that land right now where we're asking fifth-grade families to think about course selection for sixth grade. Really, really well-attended, we recorded it, shared it with families, but I think, you know, as I said to families that night, this is the first time they're getting that information this year, but they're going to get it in so many other ways over the next few months as we prepare for the students to head on into the middle school. So we're really excited about that. We had our first Scripps Spelling Bee at 12 Corners Middle School last week was the final round and Ian Dorr was our sixth grader, who will be representing 12 Corners Middle School at our regional competition in March. So fingers crossed we'll keep you updated on his journey and how he does. And Aurora Gray was our runner-up as well. So Mrs. DeBay, kudos to Mrs. DeBay and Mrs. Coyle for organizing that. This year, it was just for sixth graders, the intention is to scale that up to seventh and eighth graders. They presented it virtually this year. Next year, hopefully, we'll have a nice live in-person event. Last week, our chess club and our ACB teams had their first competition and they kind of demolished the competition. They did, it was really nice, but super exciting. You know, obviously, we don't want to demolish anybody, but they did really, really well. They've been working for weeks and weeks and they, you know, they were ready to shine and they did. So great group of kids and Ms. Lopez is actually running both groups and they just, a lot of laughs, but they're serious competitors too. So great work by them. And so many things going on throughout the building. The upper left-hand corner, our FACS eight students made dog biscuits that they shared with the Rochester Animal Services and they drew all those tags that you see there and they put them in each of the bags of biscuits that they shared with Animal Services. And so they were, that organization was very appreciative of the work of our students. We had, Gia Cavallaro's mom came and presented in our sixth-grade science class about her work helping to run studies to help people with hemophilia. So the students were wildly engaged because it was, you know, a parent of a friend, but also in the topic, it was super engaging as well. The end of the marking period was last week, so that always brings about the CO2 car races as well as our build, our bridge-building competitions and technology. And then in the bottom left, Mr. White in our general music classes this year engaged his students in studying sound design. He used the Scratch coding app and he had students code games and then they had to pull either from a bank of sounds or had to find their own sounds in order to animate and add the audio to it. Something new that we've never done in general music before and the kids were really engaged in that. I just love, you know, I welcome you to come through our building at any point because all of our walls are filled with learning. And you can see, you know, our sixth graders were writing their one-word poems for January, the new year, lots of math diagrams and correlational charts coming around the building, comics, use of technology in order to tell stories and visualize themes that students are studying just all throughout our halls. I think I talked about this last time, but we have our Bruin. You can see Mrs. Halligan is holding our Bruin on the upper right-hand corner and she gave him a mask. But each week, we've been trying to honor at least one faculty member and the work that they've been doing in the building to support, obviously, students, but each other as well. I can't say enough about what staff have been doing to hold everything up at this point, the classes that they're covering, they're just above and beyond every single day. And then in particular, I just want to highlight our nurses in the last three weeks in particular with everything that we've been going through with COVID, they have been phenomenal, they have worked close to, I would say, twenty hours a day to keep up with all of the changing regulations and who can eat in the cafeteria on this day and who needs to eat in the auditorium and who can come back after five days, but who has to be back in ten days and making sense of all of that. And they've done it all with a smile and with grace, so we are so appreciative of them. And also, you can see Andy over there, who's one of our night custodians, they really took quite a hit in January with COVID and they were working double shifts nonstop to make sure that our building was clean, that all student surfaces were sanitized and ready to go. So those people right there, we couldn't have done any of this month without and we're hopeful to not have to lean on them so much moving forward.
Thank you. And we do owe you a tour of your building, so we have that on the list, so we will be over there at some point.
We'll just not go near the locker room.
That's okay. Principal Tappin, you look ready to go.
For President Davis, keeping us on our toes, not knowing who was going to be there. So January in Ms. Flanagan's kindergarten class, she celebrated January and talking about the key Brighton believes component of taking responsibility. So students actually did a hunger helper responsibility drive, so they collected food for the Brighton food cupboard and talked about responsibility and what it looks like in the classroom, what it might look like at their houses, what it looks like in our community. And then you can see there in the bottom left, they hosted a parent Zoom or a family Zoom where they shared some of their work. They've written a digital book as a class about responsibility and what they had learned. And then, you know, my favorite is Mo Willems and they did Don't Let the Pigeon and then they got to fill in what they shouldn't let the pigeon have a responsibility to do. So there were things like do the morning announcements or drive the bus or some other things that they should not have responsibility, allow that responsibility. It was a great time and the parents really seemed to enjoy it, although it was through Zoom, it was still a great connection with the classroom. First in math is a resource that actually the New York State Department of Education has purchased for all New York State schools, but it's a really great resource. Stefana Monacino, who is our math coach at K-5, has been introducing it in many classrooms and I was able And I was able to go in, this is a first grade class, Mrs. Aiello's first grade class, when she introduced it. And the visual plus the kind of game-like way, kids were so engaged in this. They earned stickers, just simple little, they're not stickers, but they're, and they were screaming about, oh, and they were practicing math. And it really practices the fluency along with some of the other skills that we've found within our program maybe aren't reinforced a lot. And this is really a great supplemental tool that we are hoping to have in all of our classrooms as it's being provided for us by New York State Education. So. And then in second grade, geologist Tyler Lucero, who I am proud to say was one of my former students in Henrietta, he was one of my eighth graders. He is a active working geologist and he visited second grade classrooms. Again, last, last time I reported on Andrea Yaman, our enrichment specialist, bringing in someone to talk about the science and the launch of the telescope. She has brought Tyler in extending her and connecting to her extended studies curriculum and science curriculum where students were able to talk about what the story rocks can tell us and having kids really look deeply and closely at different rocks and seeing what do the characteristics tell us about where they came from and learning about that. New Year's always brings about planning and teaching students about resolutions and then goal setting. So you can see just a bunch of different creative ways. So skating into the new year, students were making resolutions and goals for the year, sledding into the new year, talking about what they're hoping to be able to accomplish by the end of, of the school year. And then just some different creative ways. So this is how our halls are alive with making our learning visible. And then our first graders are all doing winter research, but it's really interesting to walk around the building because each class has kind of adopted a different technique or, or way to go about it. This class researched penguins. This class researched owls. This class researched polar bears. So it's all kind of within the Arctic animal theme, but really learning those first steps of how to read a source, how to pull information from there, how to summarize it and how to represent it. And then we also celebrated Martin Luther King Junior Day in a variety of ways, a lot with Martin's big words and talking about the words that they hope to represent as well as what dreams they have connecting to, to Martin Luther King and celebrating through art, visual, and talking about how they can make the world a better, kinder place, much like Martin Luther King Junior. Upcoming events, so a big day, Valentine's Day. And I'll also say Hundredth Day. Hundredth Day has always been around a certain time. We are hoping to maybe with now full day K, half-day K always left that a little bit, like we had to kind of have a window. I'm hoping next year to be able to set for everyone what that day is because of the interpretation, but it's around the week of the 14th and teachers have a little latitude to pick within that. And we will celebrate those hundred days in school. Obviously, Monday, the 21st through the 25th, we have no school for February break. Looking into March, March 9th is our Brighton Believes Day and I'm sure we'll talk a lot more about that within our next presentation. And then Monday, the 14th of March, we will have, and we'll be publicizing this because it's not on the calendar, a PTSA meeting with the principals and I will combine with Mrs. Jeffries to talk about our building-based diversity, equity and inclusion work within our committees to talk about what we've been doing. So we're excited to see that. Any questions?
No, just excellent job to you and the vice principal on the new student orientation. I think there's one or two board members over there, one who's going to have a student enrolling this fall. Nice job on that.
I'll keep time for you anytime you want me to.
All right. I'm waiting, who's next?
We'll stick right along that back row and go to Marin next. Sorry, Tom.
Good evening. How is everybody doing well? We're doing great over at French Road. We are coming off the heels of a really exciting virtual author visit. And we, I know I had spoken last time about inviting Peter Brown and the work that our PTSA and Justin McVeigh had done and bringing him to the building. And I've got to say, throughout the world of like virtual experiences, this is definitely one of the best ones, I think, that our students have been able to be involved in. He really did a wonderful job engaging our students. We even had some teachers who were out due to illness or other issues and they're taking the time and making the commitment to be there and zoom in. So it was a really wonderful way to bring our school community together. And like I said, the way he engaged students in the thought process, the creative process, and really the way that this author developed some of our students, particularly at the third through fifth grade level, their, some of their favorite books was really engaging. So we're very thankful for him and his time. We are very excited to be celebrating and coming together to explore Black History Month this month. We have lots happening in the building and we've had some great collaboration with families, with students, again with our PTSA, and then right directly with our staff as well. So the building is taking on this concept again of changemakers, something that's been explored in the past. But we have a multitude of changemakers who, really worldwide, who are families and folks of color who have innovated change and are moving things forward in some way. So students and classes are welcome to choose any one of these people, explore them. We've invited them to decorate their door or show their exploration and their learning in some way. And then throughout the month, toward the end of the month, students will have the ability to kind of explore the building and see what folks are doing in other classes. We also will be hosting Malik Evans later this month. He'll be speaking to our students remotely, but speaking about his experience, his ties to Rochester and the work that he is currently doing. We're very excited about that. And we're also going to be exploring several different read-alouds this month and also be highlighting different changemakers and folks who are impacting our local and broader community through morning video announcements as well. We have also continued the work that Renee Weidor has done through extended studies really has been so far-reaching with our students. Several weeks back, I had spoken about the beginning stages of a lot of the projects that students through extended studies were engaging in. And at that point, they were in my office kind of pitching these ideas, talking about things that mattered to them, things that they wanted to see changed, both in our local community and globally. And Ms. Weidor's call to action and something that they could choose to do was make a creation that really kind of brought attention to the amount of plastic. So for students, the upper left, that's really a tall tower of bottles. And those students were really talking about removing plastic from the ocean and trying to demonstrate and, and create a visual impact for how much plastic really lands somewhere, as you can see with the lower right-hand piece as well. So kids really took it to the next level. The top, the top right chocolate milk container was talking about students trying to help create awareness around the impact of straws and what that does to the environment long term. And their call to action was trying to ban straws or decrease the use of them to our, to the extent possible. So once again, great work that's really being seen and noticed throughout the building. Later this month, we have a really exciting partnership with a local organization called Pencils and Paper. And in connection with Jewish Family Services, French Road is going to be collecting supplies to support pencils and paper. And I actually had the amazing opportunity to travel to their location right on J Street with our physical education teacher, Crystal Forsythe. And we were able to get a tour of this facility that really serves as sort of a warehouse, so to speak, where teachers from Rochester City School District can come and actually shop for their students directly. They're given an allotment of money each quarter, I believe, and they're able to come and shop. They can, there's highlighters, there's books, there's notebooks, there's general paper supplies, you name it. This place is, is supplying it for students and teachers. So it's a wonderful organization. And our third, fourth and fifth graders will be collecting 24 pound crayons, Elmer's glue and highlighters among each grade level and then working together to package and kind of bundle these items for pencils and paper to distribute directly to our CSD teachers. So it's a really awesome partnership. I can't wait to see what happens. This month, coming right up this week, we have our math team, new student information meeting with Mrs. Weidor. Will be from six to seven on Zoom, so we're expecting quite a large turnout. I'm excited for that and to get that rolling. We also will start our in-school collection, like I had mentioned, for Health Move's Minds. That'll be February 7th through 11th. And then that celebration week is when students will be doing some of that packaging and kind of a culminating activity right in PE throughout their classes over the week of the 11th. We also have the rescheduled fourth grade chorus concert coming up on the 17th. We'll be out for our recess and then we jump right back in when we return for Read Across America Week, which is always really fun. As we typically do, French Road is opening our doors to all sorts of readers, hoping that several folks can join us and come and share a story or two with our classes. So looking forward to that. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for me? Great job. Thank you very much.
So the true home of the Bruins, the high school. Just a quick Bruin update because I think we talked last time about the bear costume, the Bruin costume. We are, Nate and I finally have a vendor and we're working through that. We've got funding, hopefully from the Nancy Beck grant that's going to pay for the majority of this. I cannot believe how many months out this company is with all of the different mascots they're putting. Our goal is that we'll have it by homecoming next fall. It takes that long, it's unbelievable, the process. But more to come, I'll keep you up to speed because it's going to be exciting. So our eighth grade family, so I look at the PowerPoints and I think the class of 2029 going in the sixth grade, the 20, class of 2026 coming into ninth grade and just, you know, when you think about 2030 coming up, it just seems unbelievable. But we had a great turnout. We did a live event in the auditorium for parents who wanted to come. And we had it streamed live through the Music VPA website, which was fantastic. So the people at home, in school, very similar to the middle school. I think our orientations are very similar in terms of the highlighting first, parents with, students with IEPs, 504s. And then we had a general session for everybody to talk about high school life and what that was going to be like when they get to the high school. And very excited, Jeff was there as well, Jeff Green, and looking forward to a fantastic transition and lots of things planned and, and for this group to make a very smooth transition into the high school in the fall of 2022. Senior nights, Nate mentioned, you know, a lot of the athletic stuff going on. This is just one senior night with the hockey team, really enjoyed the cover of their brochure. But all of our senior nights are happening, many more are happening next week. Bowling tomorrow night, basketball next week. And, you know, that's just a part of what we do each season, just exciting. The kids, fantastic, as Nate was saying too, to see them playing and, and, you know, competing in a year that, you know, even though everybody's still wearing their masks, everything else seems fairly normal, I mean, right now. So it, it is really exciting. One of the things in the classrooms that I caught in Heather Bonadonna's English 12 class, it's dystopian literature. And that's an elective probably we've been offering for the last five years. It was an elective that students chose. They wanted us to start teaching, so that's one of the courses that Heather teaches. Anne Rand's Anthem, futuristic novel, again dystopian society. She, they read that book together and then she had an opportunity from the Anne Rand Institute. There was a professor there, I forget his name, Professor Ben Bayer is an instructor and fellow there at the institute and was there in, on Zoom, interacting with the kids, talking about Anne Rand as a person, growing up in Russia and being a Russian author and, you know, giving his perspective on everything he knows about Anne Rand and, and all the novels that she's written. It was a fascinating class to be a part of and hearing the questions and the interaction that they had livestreamed. Again, our goals and initiatives coming up as an upcoming meeting, but our number one goal for this year was to successfully open up and implement a five-day week schooling program, which everybody wants to. But as we continue to do that and move forward, I think from our nurses to our custodians to the teachers and everybody in between has just done a fantastic job to keep us moving and being in school every day. Program planning continues. So our counselors are meeting one-to-one with students. That was a change due to COVID, but a, a very positive change. Every single student will meet with their counselor one-on-one for a 15 to 20-minute or more meeting, depending on the student's needs, to choose courses for next year and talk about their careers and future. So that's happening now through March 11th. The program of studies is all out and we'll be discussing staffing considerations and course offerings at the end of March. Say yes to the dress, that's an annual event. We missed out last year due to COVID, but we're back. On February 17th, that'll be happening at the high school and very excited for that to return. And if you don't know anything about BHS, say yes to the dress. Many gowns, suits, tuxedos are donated, mostly gowns, but for our, our students to, to get for free, basically for upcoming proms and balls in the spring. And I know Julian Gilbert's a big part of that and we're looking forward to having that back.
So is Andrea.
And Andrea. So we're looking forward to having that back in the auditorium this year. Speaking of the auditorium, Beauty and the Beast, that will be presented next week, Thursday night, Friday, two shows on Saturday in the BHS auditorium. Sign up for, if you want tickets, you can go online. It's, it's completely professional now. You can choose your seat in the brand-new Brighton High School auditorium and pick exactly where you want to sit if it's available. Ham Jam 2022, we missed Ham Jam again last year, but senior fundraiser, it's one of the biggest fundraisers for seniors, any sort of talent, talent that a student might have, nine through 12, we'll be doing that in March. That, that's back in action. We're hoping to make it a really fun event. And for our Brighton Believes Day coming up in March, we're planning a gigantic food drive similar to last year for three days of March. Any questions?
I would pass on, Tom, that I know you guys had a little bit of a water challenge yesterday.
I'll have those pictures for next day.
Yeah, but the facilities team, I'm told, did a great job of having everything ready for school today. So our thanks to all of those people who had to scramble and make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely. It was, it was quite the mess, but you wouldn't even notice unless you looked up in the ceiling and saw the ceiling. But other than that, everything was cleaned up and we're just drying out and we'll get the ceiling tiles back up and hopefully it'll be like it never happened.
Imagine, I imagine a number of teachers had to scramble to get lessons ready and all those things as well that day. So our thanks to them as well.
Yep, everybody pitched in, it was a great remote, you know, option. We had the snow day schedule ready to go and, you know, pulled the trigger on that and everything seemed to run pretty smoothly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As always, great to hear from all the principals. There's so much going on all the time. It's a great answer to what's going on up there and there's a bazillion things is the short answer. Next up, I'm sorry, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I don't. You're absolutely.
Next up, approval of first read policies. This was the amended agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. We've added a third. This is a first read as always, and I'll do a specific read on a part of policy 5689, which is the one in regards to masking. This board is supportive of continued mitigation through the use of masks, but is equally interested in the development of, if you will, an offer room that allows for the flexibility as conditions approve. And then, and when supported by changes to state mandates, public health officials, school health personnel and district administration. Nobody loves wearing masks, but it's necessary to keep the spread of COVID and other communicable diseases down. And when it's safe and appropriate to do so, we want to be able to take them off. So first, three policies tonight, as noted in the beginning, policy listed under letter A, policy 6150, personnel, alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances, staff. Policy 7320, students, alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances. These are rules around keeping everybody safe, basically. Let me quickly add here for letter C, 5689, masking on school grounds and within school facilities. And I'm going to quickly read this. The Board of Education recognizes the importance of face masks as a strategy for mitigating the spread of communicable illnesses such as COVID-19 and the district's role in providing for the health and safety of students and staff. The superintendent will be responsible for developing an in-district masking policy to be implemented when a state or local mandate is not in place and will provide flexibility based on absenteeism, rate of infection and ability to provide alternative mitigation strategies. The masking policy should consider the advice and guidance of public health officials, the school physician, the school physician, the CDC, the New York State Department of Health, the Monroe County Department of Health, and in-district health office staff members, of which we have many excellent people. The masking policy will also reflect the ability of the district to effectively provide other mitigating strategies such as distance between individuals and the ability of the district to effectively trace potential exposures. As noted in the beginning, this is a first read for these three policies. Any questions with regards to the first reads? Motion to approve for a first read?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. All those in favor? Item number nine, approval of second read policies. These were obviously discussed at the January 18th meeting. You've had a chance to review, I'll read the three policies and then ask if there are any additional questions. First, policy 6213, personnel, registration and professional learning. What says letter B, policy 8130, instruction, equal educational opportunities. And under letter C, policy 8220, instruction, career and technical occupational education. Any questions with regards to these second reads? Motion to approve the second reads?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 10, a consent agenda. If you've had a chance to see this, fundraising activities, friend-in-me book drive, which will provide children's books to the pediatric unit at the Gallusano Children's Hospital. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Julian?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent McGowan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.